Mr. Durnall, you heard that Mr. Durnall Jimmy had lost his partner. I think that was his domain. And Doran was such a wonderful person. She was such a big part of this community and so deeply glorified her hand in the community. And I very liked her attention. I'm a Christian writer, so I'd like to have a moment of silence.
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate having Doran on.
These are comments.
Yeah, I think we had one. Marcy Edwards. I'll keep track of your time for you.
What is it?
Three minutes, Mr. Durnall.
Yes, if you can make that happen. A little bit over, it's okay.
So I'm here tonight on behalf of several people that couldn't attend. So I'm going to be a little bit jumping over the place a few times because I have an email here that somebody had wanted me to read some of that couldn't be here. And what part of this email address is, I'm not going to read the whole thing, but just parts of it. Enough is enough. How long are we going to keep doing this to our children? The state has said we no longer need to quarantine if we have a mask mandate, but yet here we are, still quarantining and keeping healthy kids at home. One family has had to keep their healthy elementary student at home for 40 days due to being a close contact. How is that helping that child? Before COVID, if a child was out of school for 15 or more days, there would be harsh consequences for the parents. And I'm going to speak on that, but part of it is, you know, there's a double standard here that if a kid missed a couple of years ago, 15 days or more, it was this huge problem. And a parent would get a letter sent home and what, where's the kid at? What are we doing? But yet, right now, we still have no problem quarantining these kids. We're doing the masks. I've had multiple conversations with Dr. Sanders. Why are we still doing all these things? If we're wearing the masks, then why are we still close contact tracing? Why? We don't have to be. You sent me the protocol and I literally circled it where it said, if you're wearing the masks, you don't have to be doing this. And you said that was your choice and that's what we're doing. Why are we still being over the top? The numbers are down. If you look at data, and you guys say you look at data, my question is, what data are you looking at? Because I have plenty of numbers showing schools and surrounding areas that are mask required and their numbers are sometimes higher than places where masks are optional. So just because you talked to Penny at the Monroe County Health Department, that is not all the data that we need to be looking at. I'm not understanding why we are just looking at one little piece, because I feel like that is what's happening here. How is it okay for the principal at EPS to say, you know, you can't be on the PTO if you're not vaccinated as a parent? We went through this at the beginning of this year with the field trips. You tried to say in the protocol, parents have to be vaccinated to go on field trips. And then when people question it, rather than backing up, looking at it, the big picture, and saying, hey, you know, maybe you're right. Parents probably don't need to be vaccinated. Nope. We went the complete opposite way and said, nope, we're just not going to do field trips. And I'm tired of these strict protocols for absolutely no reason. The numbers are down. We've got to stop doing this to our children right now. In the vaccine clinics that you send all these emails about, look how many people are in this meeting tonight. What, 15 people sitting here tonight? Where's all the emails informing people that there's a school board meeting tonight? How many emails have I received from you, Dr. Sanders, about the vaccine clinics that you're planning on hosting here at this school? But yet, you don't tell people about the school board meeting. You know, I mean, we're the only school doing these clinics and why do you feel it is our responsibility, this school's responsibility, to host these clinics? If you want to get a shot for your child, there's plenty of places. This school, it's not your responsibility to host these clinics here and absolutely not during the school day when parents are not present. Absolutely not. It's got to stop right now.
Thank you for your time tonight. Appreciate it. I'm sorry?
I believe that was the only speaker.
Okay. Our next item is the consent agenda. We have approval of minutes for the regular board meeting of October 18th, 2021. And all of our board meetings are posted online and the schedule's set a year in advance at least. Financial report, we have the treasury report for October of '21. Mr. Durnall, could you read us the claims?
The claims, yes, sir. The gross wages for October 1st, 2021 is $645,590.19. Gross wages for October 15th, 2021, $547,870.37. Gross wages, mini payroll on October 18th, 2021, $1,035. Gross wages for October 29th, 2021, $646,298.97. Claims for prepays for 10/1/21 through October 31/21 is $1,153,449.2 for claims at Regard vouchers for November 15th, 2021, $560,307.62. Claims at Forest Hills vouchers for November 16th, 2021 is $36,829.
Thank you, Mr. Durnall. We have also consideration of donations. We have two tonight. Both are from the Donors Choose program. One is for Mrs. Drew's classroom for $607 and the other is for Mrs. Drewax's classroom for $1,242.42. We appreciate the donations as always and Donors Choose has been very good for our teachers to get things for the classrooms. We also have personnel, resignations, retirements, non-renewals, leaves, and terminations, D1 through D7, and appointments and transfers, 1 through 10. Dr. Sanders?
Yes, Mr. Kerr. I just wanted to make note of one transfer that's of special note for us tonight. Three years ago, when I first became superintendent, I proposed to the school board that we not replace the assistant superintendent position and instead hire Paul Federer through administrative assistance to help us get to corporation to a better financial position. The plan was to ultimately hire a full-time business manager, which we did. We eventually hired Matt Irwin as our full-time business manager. And I know that all of you will agree, and I think most people in the audience would agree, that Matt has done an amazing job in that role. With him, we have addressed issues in the corporation that needed attention for many years. RBB is in a much better position financially due to Matt's excellence, his work ethic, his knowledge and skills. Matt is a great support to me as a superintendent and I appreciate having someone of Matt's caliber as my partner. I feel it's time to match Matt's title to the role he actually plays in our school corporation. People often actually refer to him as assistant superintendent. Paul is stepping down, coming less and less. He's down to one month now and we hope to, although we really like Paul and Paul really helps us and validates a lot of our decisions, we're trying to reduce the number of days he comes over and we'll apply those savings to the increase in Matt's pay. So I just wanted to make a special note about Matt becoming our new assistant superintendent.
Thank you. For the consent agenda, do we have motion?
I'd move approval, Mr. President.
I second.
Any questions, comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our next item is going to be the Mustang Moment and we're going to have to rearrange the stage slightly. So give us a few minutes and then Dr. Sanders will introduce the Mustang Moment.
So as the screen is coming down here, can you hear me? Is that on? Good. As the screen is coming down, first I'm just going to, I'm going to start by confessing a fear that I had. This is the first time that I know of that Edgewood Early Childhood Center has done a Mustang Moment at a school board meeting. It's certainly the first time since I've been here. And I was afraid to bury live preschoolers here after dark to be part of the Mustang Moment. So I'm going to start with that confession. I did not know at the time that that fear was going to lead to such an inconvenient set change up here on the stage. Earlier today, I was talking to Mr. Carter about what was going to go on up here and he said, well, I have to come in, you know, one Thursday every month for National Honor Society to do this very same thing for a PowerPoint that usually lasts two and a half minutes. And I said, well, this video is three minutes long. So, Mr. Carter, we're going to get 30 more seconds of value out of your time here this evening. So what you're going to see here in a moment is a reflection of two perspectives of preschool and RBB. Today, I took the very first college visit that I've done with my daughter. We were over here at IU. And Ellie, who's of course a senior this year, had a lot of input and a lot of expression about what we did for lunch today. After we sat down for a very enlightening conversation with the chair of the English Department, I said, okay, Ellie, what stuck with you from that time? Uh, I don't know. Two different perspectives, right? What was important to Ellie was a little less important to me today and what was important to me today was maybe a little less important to Ellie. When you come into our preschool, if you were to ask one of the grownups within the walls of the preschool, what's important? What are you guys doing here at the preschool that makes a difference? You would hear things about what we've done with the PLC process this year in preschool. Now, you may know something about the PLC process across the whole school corporation. The idea of identifying those core foundational elements, those essential standards that form that guaranteed and viable curriculum, that idea of common formative assessment, that idea of knowing what your students are supposed to be learning, how you're going to know that they know it, what you're going to do if they are learning it, what you're going to do if they're not. Those are concepts that are commonly discussed, of course, in the K-12 world and the PLC model. But it's happening in our preschool as well. In this video, you're going to see the seven essential foundations that we've chosen from Indiana State Foundations. And that was a process that we started last year with Jim McMillan, our class representative. And we've continued this year in partnership with our kindergarten teachers at EPS. We've identified seven foundations from the state's broad set of foundations that are ones that we're going to use to constitute our guaranteed and viable curriculum at preschool. You're going to find out a little bit more about what those foundations are in this video, those things that are important to us as grownups as we think about the educational viability of our preschool. But you're also going to hear from some real preschoolers today who are going to tell you what's important to them about their experience at AECC.
Hey, guys, I really wanted to say this. I love when my teachers do class with me and play with me because I love it.
Toys for little kids. I like to play on a playground and I like to walk.
I like to go to preschool because my friends are like really competitive.
I love to do that at preschool. I love, I play. I have my teachers, Ms. Key and Ms. Chris.
Yeah.
I like my family.
My family.
Um, my head likes to be my friend and I watch every day and I learn every day.
You see there? You meet friends, new friends.
Go to the big playground.
Hi, my name's Annie and my favorite thing to do at preschool is make crafts.
I like to play at the park and the park.
I like to play in the kitchen.
I just got a skeleton on my bed.
The toy yard.
Because I love all my friends.
I like to paint a unicorn for you.
Play.
I like playing with my, uh, playing with the Squishies.
My house to learn because I still friends.
I'm playing.
I like to see friends.
No reason why doing my teacher.
Because I knew.
Because you do?
Yeah.
Okay.
Tyra, please draw. Bye.
So we had to keep both those perspectives in mind, right, moving forward as a preschool. As you may know, over the next few months, we're seeking national accreditation through NACI. That'll be the process by which we move to level four on Indiana's past equality system. And two things have to happen in order for us to be able to do that. One, we've got to demonstrate a commitment to curriculum assessment, which is what we're doing through our PLC process. But we have to do so in a way that keeps kids first, that's child-centered, that's play-based, and that's developmentally appropriate. And I hope this video gives you both of those perspectives of what's happening at AECC. We're excited to see you. Come on by, drop in and see what's happening at the preschool and especially excited to see you here in a couple of months as we move into our new facility. Thanks so much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wooden. Appreciate your, really appreciate seeing all the kids. It really reminds us why we're here and, you know, who we're really working for. So thank you very much.
Mr. Kerr, I would, I just also wanted to say a little bit more. Our preschool program is just growing leaps and bounds in terms of quality and it's definitely a direct result of the leadership that Matt provides. And that was a great video that we need to put on our website if we can. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Our next item is the business manager's report. I guess we should say assistant superintendent's report.
Yes. I recognize that.
All in bittersweet of what you guys said about the preschool. My son attends the preschool. I enjoyed watching that video and I know, I know that he definitely enjoys the environment and we're glad that we have him there. We'll start with the cash flows here. You should have the updated cash flows. They're updated from what I sent you last week. The new Form 54 came out today from the state, which is the monthly projections for tuition support. So if you look at year-end cash balance projections, we're looking to be in a really great place. It shows the September ADM enrollment, that change in enrollment from what the projection was there for the first few months of the year, starting in July. So we'll see an increase in funds in November and December as they reconcile what those payments would have been had they known the actual number from the get-go in July. We'll see probably a little bit more change in those last two numbers. Once they do the reconcile for honors grant, they'll reconcile for CTE. And then later on, at the beginning of next year, they'll reconcile for SPED grant as well. So those numbers will continue to fluctuate, fluctuate a little bit. You'll see in the expenses that we've planned for the next two months, the expenses being higher based on the proposed increases for all staff that we're bringing to you tonight. So we've accounted for those in the projections as well. So again, we're really happy with where we stand in the education fund. They're not the huge increases that we've seen the last couple of years and we've said that plenty of times over the course of this year. And that wasn't the goal, that wasn't the plan, but we're in a really good place. So we're happy with where we're at. I won't talk much about the debt service fund just because there wasn't any revenue or expenditures in that fund during the month of October. And again, that's planned and it's not a surprise. So I won't spend much time there. So rolling over to the operations fund. Just a more positive note, we look to end the year about even with where we started the year, which is terrific. In our miscellaneous revenue for the month, we receded in rentals from the Hilli Hundred, farmland rental from the ground that we own by EPS, and then just reimbursement of our SRO grant that we have for our two fantastic SROs. Again, in the projection of the expenses, it takes into account the proposals that we brought to you tonight. And so again, we're excited with where we stand. We, again, hopefully will end another year in really solid financial place, so we're excited about that. I did want to bring up one other thing and note, just Mr. Tucker, you had asked about this last month, but we did finalize the sale of the 2021 GO note at the end of October. So that sale of that bond happened on October 4th. We closed on that bond on October 26th. It's paid back over two years. So there'll be two payments in 2022, two payments in 2023. And so with it only being a really short repayment, there's not a lot of interest to pay out on it. And the other great part of it was we had paid less than 1% on interest. So it was 0.72% coupon rate. So that was definitely a great sale there. Very appreciative of all the help that we had with that. But without taking any questions.
Wonderful, thank you. Is there any questions? Matt on the business manager's report?
One quick question. Was that, was October, is that a three-pay month?
Yeah. October is a, yeah, October is a three-pay month for us, yeah. We're on that bi-weekly, 26 pays in a year. And so there's two months in a year where we have three pays and October was one of those.
So November's a two-pay month, but that's with the increases that we're voting on later tonight.
Yeah.
Got it?
Some of them will be spread out over in this last pay in November. Some of them will fall into December just because there's a lot to process there in a short timeframe. We've been preparing for that, you know, hoping that you guys would, you know, accept the proposals, but it does take quite a bit of work to get that turned around.
Right. Thank you.
Next, we have consideration to approve the Indiana Bond Bank resolution. Mr. Irwin?
Yeah, so in the budget adoption, we had to do the resolution that just gave permission that we levy for the TAW interest that's charged for it. This resolution is for us to actually have permission to do the actual tax anticipation warrant. We plan to only do it for the debt service fund. Again, the resolution just simply gives the permission. It doesn't mean that you absolutely have to do it. We do plan on participating in the 2022 program and just this resolution sets us on the path to make sure that we close. January 27th is the tentative date. We had initially signed up for interim funds where they get it to you earlier in the month, but we don't think that we need that. We can wait until January 27th. It just helps with that cash flow dispersment, with the way those cash flows come in, with property tax dispersments coming in twice a year. And so they come in in June and December, so it just offsets that, that kind of that in-between time period. So with that, I ask for your permission to accept that.
Have motion?
I make a motion to accept.
I'll second.
Move to second. Any questions on the resolution for the Indiana Bond Bank? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our next item is to approve an amendment to policy 4550. And this would be a second reading, so it would be an action item this evening. Mr. Irwin?
Yeah, so again, this is the second reading, so last month we talked about this as well. It just goes, it talks about the termination of employment for classified employees and changes some of the language on that just because the way it was originally written, I think the intention of it was that if we were going to eliminate a job, say we were going to do away with a certain position, that we would give notice under certain circumstances that an employee might leave the school corporation. It isn't always applicable to give a two-week notice that there might be done at the school corporation. So the actual reading of the new policy would say all classified staff are considered at-will employees, which allows either the employee or the employer to terminate employment at any time. The board requests employees provide two weeks' notice in writing of employees' intention to resign. If an employee resigns without notice, employees may not be eligible for rehire. So that's the part of change that's in the policy from before.
Okay. Have motion?
I move that we approve the amendment to policy 4550.
I'll second.
Any questions or comments? I'm glad it clears up some ambiguous language, so.
Yeah.
Right.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our next item is the consideration to approve a renewal agreement with JAG, which is a wonderful program we're a part of. Dr. Sanders?
Yes, sir. I am recommending approval of a renewal agreement between South Central Region Workforce Board and RBB to implement the JAG program. JAG stands for Jobs for America's Graduates. JAG is offered to juniors and seniors who have been identified as students who are at risk of graduating. who are at risk of graduating and/or making a, a successful transition from school to a career with advanced opportunities. So, uh, the grant is through Workforce Investment and Opportunity Act and provides, uh, the, the high school with a, a JAG specialist, uh, who is Michael Doring. Uh, and he does an awesome job, uh, in that role. Uh, and R B B, uh, also provides, uh, support for the JAG students and, and also the use of a classroom. So, I recommend your, uh, approval of this renewal agreement.
I move approval, Mr. President.
I'll second.
Uh, any questions, comments?
I just would say that in my last year of teaching, I got to work with the JAG as it got off the ground a little bit and working with Michael and, and some students who were having some difficulty. It was a, I'm afraid that in previous years, those students might not have made it. But, uh, Michael and, and, uh, the, the program, I think, really gave them some incentive and some support to get through. So, I, I'm, I'm all in favor of it. I think it's a terrific program.
Yeah, sure is. Anything further? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Um, next, we have, uh, consideration to approve the distribution of the teacher appreciation grant funds. Dr. Sanders?
Yes, so sometime this week, uh, all school corporations in Indiana should receive, uh, the allotment, uh, of what, uh, the state is providing for the teacher appreciation grant. Uh, I'm seeking for your approval to distribute the teacher appreciation grant funds under the following guidelines. Grants, uh, the stipends have to be distributed in a single payment. Uh, school corporations must distribute all stipends for, to teachers within 20 days of the date on which, uh, the DOE, uh, distributes the teacher appreciation grant dollars to, uh, local, uh, school systems. The teacher appreciation grant funds will be given to effective and highly effective teachers. Uh, by law, highly effective teachers must receive 25% more than the effective teachers. Uh, uh, the tag bonuses, uh, must be, uh, given out as stipends. Uh, and teachers must hold a certified position here at R B B. Uh, we also are, uh, this year, effective and highly effective administrators will receive a stipend equal to, uh, the tag stipend, stipend that'll be given to teachers. Uh, appreciation stipends given to the administrators, though, will not be paid out of the tag funds, but will be paid out of, uh, the, uh, education, uh, fund for the corporation. So, I recommend your approval.
Motion?
I move approval. I second.
Move and seconded. Questions, comments?
Dr. Sanders, what, what does that equate to a ballpark number for highly effective?
It ranges around $400.
And then a little bit less for effective?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
It's a nice, nice bonus for our, our, our staff.
Coming at the holiday period.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, we have the, uh, consideration to ratify the 2021 to 2022, uh, collective bargaining agreement. Dr. Sanders?
Yes, as I mentioned at the public hearing that, that we were required to have, we have a, just a really, a positive relationship with our, uh, local teachers association. Uh, that, uh, the process of bargaining, uh, goes so much, uh, more smooth uh, because of the positive relationships that we have, uh, year-round. And, uh, so, uh, I just want to thank, uh, Doug Yules, President of Teachers Association and his bargaining team, and also, uh, Matt Irwin and Paul Fetter, who helped with the bargaining process. We were able to, uh, negotiate, uh, a, I think a very solid, uh, teachers, uh, tentative agreement with the teachers association. Uh, so, there were two items that, that, uh, if you look at the contract, contract that were eliminated. Uh, uh, language for dues deduction and also language for the pandemic leave were both eliminated. Uh, items that were added to the teacher's contract, we added a list of pay dates. So, everybody will know exactly what pay dates, uh, are, are coming for the, the coming school year. Uh, teachers with a lump sum payment, uh, for, uh, extracurricular duties of less than $1,000, uh, will be paid at the end of the season, once the task has been completed. That language was added. Uh, also added, uh, for the 2021, 2022 school year, R B B will make a one-time contribution to, uh, an employee's, uh, HSA account. Other language added, uh, relates to teachers being hired after May 30th, 2004. The board will buy back up to 185 days at a rate of, uh, $50 per day at the time the teacher retires. Uh, that money will be deposited into, into the teacher's 401A account. Uh, we added language on the public hearing, uh, for bargaining, uh, both before and after the process. And we added, uh, new language, uh, for, uh, hiring, uh, new teachers. Items revised were the salary schedule. So, the new range is 41,500 to 76,500 at the top of the scale. Um, the E C A schedules 1 through 11 were increased by 50%. Uh, we added, or we moved retirement language, uh, to appendix I. And then we increased, uh, contribution, uh, to teachers 403B accounts from 2% to 2.5%. Uh, Matt, is there anything else that you need to add?
Got it. Got the thumbs up from Matt. Okay, uh, do we have motion?
I move approval of the master contract.
I second.
Move and seconded. Any questions, comments? It is such a wonderful thing how well our administration gets, uh, along with our teachers. Uh, it's, it's a really great relationship and they really, uh, each tries to do the most and best that they can for the other, so we appreciate that. So, the motion in seconded to ratify the collective bargaining agreement. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Um, next up is to approve administrative contracts, uh, for this and next, uh, school year. Dr. Sanders?
Yes, so, uh, I had this vision for, uh, how we would approach administrative salaries this year. And it worked out perfectly thanks to the people, uh, who were involved and all of our administrators. But, uh, we put together, uh, an administrative salary review team, uh, so that we would be able to, uh, develop a specific model, a, some rhyme or reason, reason to, uh, determining administrative salaries. Uh, we wanted to establish, um, basically a story of how, uh, from year to year, how salaries for administrators, uh, were determined. So, down the road, as we look back and we think, well, what happened several years ago? We'll be able to have, uh, a path that we'll be able to show how we came up with those salaries. Uh, we wanted to be able to come up with administrative salaries that were competitive uh, with other school corporations. We, uh, have a very talented administrative team. And as we've been saying for the last several years, uh, a school corporation is so much more successful when there's consistent leadership from year to year to year. And once, one way that you accomplish that is through competitive, uh, administrative salaries. Uh, and we also have some, uh, positions through, over the years and maybe not having a rhyme or reason for determining administrative salaries. We have some positions that, that were just out of line. And so, uh, we're working to bring those, uh, specific positions back into alignment. Some of those positions, we were able to get there this year. Uh, some we, uh, we took, uh, we, we had a great effort, uh, to, uh, addressing, uh, those positions, uh, that were out of line, but we have some that we'll have to continue, uh, next year and work on them down the road. And so, uh, in your board packet are the administrative salaries, uh, for 2021, 2022, uh, that I recommend for your approval.
Okay, we'll add those in the board packet. Is there a motion?
I move approval.
I'll say it.
Uh, any questions, comments?
Doc, Doc says, I want to just retract back to the, uh, the teacher's contract. That, that was a one-year contract, right?
Yes.
Okay, okay. And this will be for, this is a two-year contract?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Anything further?
I just appreciate, uh, the work that everybody put into, uh, the, the hours that they spent trying to come up with a, some way to put some rhyme and reason in this, uh, process. I do appreciate it.
Yes, they, uh, did use quite a large body of data to, to, uh, to really look deep into this. So, we appreciate their hard work. So, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, as we continue to work with, um, our employees, uh, now we have consideration to approve classified contracts and staff pay increases. Mr. Irwin?
Yeah, so on the classified side, we don't have as many contracts. Uh, one of the, a couple of them just kind of highlighting the raises for our four directors and our corporation nurse. Uh, they were virtually the same across the board. Some of them were off by a few odd dollars as we tried to get them rounded off to that nearest thousand. Uh, but again, those were in line with kind of how we treated everyone else and the way that we approached that. Um, and again, we were very happy with where, where we were able to get to and, and continue to, to, to make a concerted effort to get those to a really competitive place. Um, our other classified, a couple of the other classified positions with our OTs and some social workers that we hold some classified contracts with, those were more, more in line with how we, uh, addressed some of the things with our classified rates because a couple of those contracts are still done out by hourly rate. Um, and so, again, just looking at the rates, I gave you that sheet that had all the old pay scales on it and the new ones. We didn't, we addressed it a little bit differently than what we had in the last couple of years because they knew, we knew there were places that we needed to really, um, take a hard look at to make sure that we were, we were where we needed to be. One of those being instructional aids. We had a rate that started at 937 an hour. And that wasn't going to cut it. We pulled that up to $12 an hour. So, we've made some pretty significant investment in different positions and different groupings within the school corporation. And all of them on average are at least or more than the types of raises that they've even seen the last two years. We've made a pretty, uh, significant investment in our people this year, um, which we felt was pretty warranted, uh, especially as we think about the many great people that we have involved with our community and our kids that we want to keep involved. And as openings come up, we have the ability to attract really great people to come in and work with our kids as well. And so, we, we just, like I said, we spent a lot of time looking at that, looking at other, looking at other data and trying to take, um, you know, a hard look at what we could do to find ourselves in a really competitive place, um, with our rates and scales. And so, with that, we ask for your approval of the new contracts and, and pay scales.
Motion?
I'll move, go ahead, sir.
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Move and seconded. Any questions or comments?
Uh, just a quick question, Mr. Irwin. That's, so is that from his point forward or is that a retro also?
So, we will retro those as well. So, when we retro that, we'll take it back based on the start of their school year. So, a lot of our classified positions, they start from the beginning of the school year. And so, most of those will start back and they'll retro back to the start of their first paycheck of the school year. And so, they'll see a, not only a new rate, but they'll see a retro from what their pay would have been had that rate actually started in August. But because of the timing of when we start to see our ADM count, when we kind of see where our finances sit and we reevaluate what kind of, um, changes we think that we can make and still meet our financial goals, we then make those changes and then we retro it back like it happened from the beginning of the year. So, when we do the new pay, they'll not only see the new rate, but they'll see a retro on there as well, which again, is fantastic with the, with the timing of the holidays. It's a nice, it's a nice thank you gift to our staff, um, for not only, you know, the hard work that they put in, but the hard work that they, they will continue to put in over the course of the school year.
And that'll be spread over November, December?
Yeah, so we, yeah, we'll, yeah, so we'll try to get, we'll try to get, um, all of our certified stuff out, um, this coming pay and then all of our classified stuff to pay after. So, we will have everything out hopefully before Christmas.
Perfect, all right, thank you.
Anything further? There's a little bit of history. Um, 2008, of course, there was a kind of a collapse in the, the economy. And from that point forward, for quite a long time, um, our teachers, our, our staff, administrators have all worked with us and, and we had to end up maintaining, uh, a lot of, um, the pay and weren't able to do increases as much as they deserved. Um, so, uh, really looking at it this year with the, with the current administration, with Dr. Sanders and Mr. Irwin and the help of Paul Fetter, we've, we've, we've gotten better, um, with our financial health. And so, we definitely want to put that back into our employees. So, we're just, it's, it's a joy to sit here and give people the increases they deserve. So, we, and we appreciate your guys' hard work on that. Anything further? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our last regular agenda item is consideration to approve easements, uh, for the new administration and support services building project. Uh, Dr. Sanders?
Yes, so back in July, uh, the board gave pre-approval to, uh, these easements with Duke. Uh, but now that we received the actual easements, we wanted to present them to the board, give you a chance to look in, at them and confirm that pre-approval. So, uh, the easement is for Duke Energy to place a transformer for the new administration and support services building project.
I move approval.
I second.
Questions, comments? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Um, you have any miscellaneous items for us tonight, Dr. Sanders?
Yeah, I actually do, I have three.
Right.
Um, first, I wanted to take this moment to congratulate our marching Mustangs. Uh, although they were disappointed and I was too in, in the third-place, uh, competition. I know I'm a little prejudiced about our band, but, um, they were clearly the best band there. In fact, the people around me were commenting, uh, how well, uh, Edgewood performed. And I just had to tell you a real quick story because I'll never forget it and may be very proud to, to be a Mustang. So, we were at the, uh, semi-state and, uh, my wife and I, uh, got to the competition and we were waiting for our turn to take our seats. And there was a lady, uh, from Scottsburg, uh, sitting there. And, uh, the Scottsburg band performed, I think they were first or second right at the beginning of the competition, and Edgewood was towards the end. And, uh, while we were talking, she said, well, she said, "I just had to come back, uh, at the end of the day, just to watch Edgewood." And that says a lot. Uh, and so, I just appreciate Aaron Wells and, uh, all the, uh, the band members. They worked so hard, uh, all through the summer and the fall. Now, I would, I've invited, I haven't heard back from Mr. Wells, but I've invited him to, uh, bring, uh, some of our senior band members to our December board meeting where we could recognize them. Uh, and also, uh, our Edgewood Theater Arts, uh, group, uh, has already performed, uh, uh, twice on, uh, Curtains, the musical comedy, Who Done It? And, uh, if you haven't, I haven't had a chance to go, but I'm going this Friday night. So, I just want to do a little commercial for those, uh, hard-working students also. We have a, uh, performance, uh, Friday night, uh, November 19th, uh, at 7:00 a.m. here in the auditorium. And then Saturday, the 20th, at 2:00. What's that?
You said 7:00 a.m., you mean 7:00 p.m., right?
7:00 p.m.
Good.
Yeah, no one's going to be here at 7:00 a.m., 7:00 p.m. Uh, so, I, I can't wait to see. I've heard a lot of great things about this performance. I can't wait to see, uh, my own, uh, viewing of this program. Um, and then finally, I'm not going to go through it, but on the back of my, uh, superintendent's report is, uh, a construction update. The board, if you want to take a look at that, if you have any questions, just... The board, if you want to take a look at that, if you have any questions, just give me a call.
Okay. Wonderful. And now the superintendent's report, Dr. Sanders.
Yes, I, I just want to take a moment to kind of go over our RBB COVID numbers and also just kind of reaffirm our best practice responses. So since fall break, the number of students, well, no, I'm sorry, the current number of students quarantined as of November twelfth for EEECC, this is last Friday, we had five students quarantined. At EPS, we have one hundred and twenty-three students quarantined. EIS, forty-five. The junior high, we have thirty-nine. And at the high school, we have, currently have sixteen students quarantined. Now, back before fall break, those numbers were quite different. You saw the high school having similar numbers to EPS. And we did a little research on that to make sure we understood what the situation was here at RBB. And, and we've just been told that, that basically most schools experience peaks and valleys in terms of their COVID numbers. And we were given the guidance to continue on with the, the safety measures that we've implemented. For the number of positive cases, now this is since fall break, we've had zero cases at the primary, at the preschool. We've had, since fall break, unfortunately, we've had sixteen students who tested positive at EPS since fall break and eight staff members. At EIS since fall break, we've had ten students who tested positive and two staff members. At the junior high, eight students have tested positive since fall break, zero staff members. And at the high school, we've had thirteen students who've tested positive with zero staff members testing positive since fall break. I think these numbers do indicate that we are still in the middle of a pandemic. I know that every day when I come up, come to work, I'm hoping that, that the numbers will get better, that we won't have a case that day. And so we have to stay diligent. If we want to keep our kids in school and we have to, we want to keep our kids safe, I believe that we need to stay diligent in the safety measures that we're implementing. So we are continuing, continuing to require masks, and that's per the health order. We have to follow that. It's a health order for our entire community. We are continuing to require masks on the bus. That is a federal public transportation order. We have to do that. We are continuing to require seating charts in the classroom and on the school bus. We are continuing contact tracing, and, and that's in accordance with Indiana Code sixteen dash forty-one dash two dash one. That is state law that we have to do the contact tracing. We are taking advantage of the options that the state's given us to reduce the number of days that students and staff have to quarantine. It is supposed to be fourteen days, but the state allows us to do eight days with a negative test and precautions, or ten days. We at the, at EPS, I'm proud of them because in order to reduce the number of students being quarantined, we are, we've organized students into pods. So the pods that they are together with in the classroom are, they stay in that pod when they're lining up to go to music or art, one of the specials or the cafeteria. They stay in those pods and that reduces the number of students who have to quarantine. So we are going to have vaccination clinics for five to eleven-year-olds. That has been approved by the, the government to be able to do that and the CDC. And so on this Thursday, the students or parents were given the opportunity to register their children to have the Pfizer vaccination. So that'll be, they had a choice from Monroe County of Bloomington High School South or the EPS Gymnasium. And so the first one will be this Thursday, November, yeah, this Thursday, November eighteenth. We also are organizing clinics for during the school day. We have some parents, I'm sure, that, that will appreciate not having, or maybe they can't take their kids to town, to, to Bloomington to get the vaccination. So we will be offering on December fifteenth and January nineteenth, the opportunity for parents to have their five to eleven-year-old child vaccinated at school. The Monroe County Health Department will be, they will be actually conducting the clinic. We're just providing our, our facilities for use. For the school day clinics, they will, they will require a paper version of a permission slip that will be sent home, will be sending those home the Monday after Thanksgiving for parents to return to school. These vaccination clinics are one hundred percent voluntary. No student will receive the COVID vaccination without parental consent, and parents will be allowed to be present for the vaccination. And we understand that parents, just like probably anything in life, parents have different views on how to raise their children. And we know that we have some parents who do not want to have the vaccination given to their child, and we respect that. But we also have a number of parents who do want their child to be vaccinated, so we want to be able to present them with the opportunity to do so. And so we continue to work with the Monroe County Health Department on all these issues. We were concerned a few weeks ago about the increasing numbers at EPS. And so we had a meeting with Monroe County Health Department just to make sure that we were on target and was there any consideration that, that we needed to give to taking further measures? And we were told that we were doing exactly as we should be and to continue down that path. And so this is really a tough time for everybody. I think everybody in this auditorium would, would also agree that we, we look forward to the day when we're past this pandemic. But in the meantime, everybody here has to do what's, what they think is best for their own families, but also if we have a role in this, in the school corporation, doing what's best for our students corporation-wide. So that's my superintendent's report for tonight.
I'd like to add to that just a little bit. You know, to emphasize how, that this is voluntary. And I remember at a past meeting, somebody was concerned that, well, you're going to get little Johnny's class to line up, all those that are going to be vaccinated, and so the kids would know who is and who isn't and things like that. And whether, there's so many opportunities for the vaccinations, you know, the doctor's offices, pediatrician's office, things like that, nobody really knows if somebody's got it or not. And also, students are pulled from the classroom for short periods of time for numerous reasons. I, I know that they have reading help, and so they'll, they'll go with the reading group or they'll have speech or they'll have other speech and language reasons. There's going to the nurse to get your insulin. There's just a large number of reasons why students are pulled that, my understanding is, my wife's a second grade teacher, they don't pay attention to who's going, leaving the room and who's not, the other students. They're just all doing their own work. And so, so that shouldn't be a concern about any kind of peer pressure kind of thing because it just wouldn't, wouldn't be there. Also, when it comes to quarantining, if, you heard we had five students, EEECC, for instance, quarantined, but no students or staff that tested positive. Well, there's other reasons why they may be quarantined. For instance, it was on the bus that they rode on. It was at their daycare or after-school care, a Boys and Girls Club, or so many other outside contacts that might have contributed to those students being quarantined. So I just wanted to add that.
Very good.
Anything else?
Yeah, Dr. Sanders, on Thursday, the eighteenth, that's, that's four, seven at night, correct? That's not during the day?
They won this Thursday from four to seven o'clock, yes. And parents already were able to go on and register and get an appointment. Those slots have been full.
Okay.
So if they don't have an appointment for Thursday night, then they will either need to have their child be vaccinated on the, the December fifteenth date, or there are several other options throughout the community that they could go to and get the vaccination.
So where do they go to that? Monroe County Health Department site to sign up for other locations?
They could do that. There's links, the vaccine dot coronavirus dot IN dot gov. If you go there, parents can register for other sites. And there is, I have a letter going out to parents tomorrow that will share all this information with them. But one more item I should probably add is the Indiana Department of Health will be visiting Bloomington with a mobile clinic, November seventeenth through the twentieth, and they will have vaccinations for anyone five years old and up. So it's not just five to eleven-year-olds for the mobile clinic, it's five and up. And they will also have testing available at this mobile clinic, and that'll be at the Smith Research Center parking lot in Bloomington.
Okay, and then as far as bullet number one on the Monroe County mask order, that's, that's, if I remember the wording right, it was through the, end of October, and then it's, it's week to week, they could adjust it sometime in November? Is that the way it is, or?
Yes, I think what they're doing is monitoring the level that Monroe County is in, and they'll use that data to determine whether or not to make adjustments to their order.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Anything further? Our next item would be RBB EA, our Teachers Association. Mr. Yules could not be present this evening. He's normally, does that for us. I will say though, he did attend the hearing we had on the collective bargaining agreement and was, as president, I guess, of that association, he was very much in favor of the agreement that we passed this evening. Board member comments? I'll start with Mr. DeMoss.
I'd ask to, I would add my congratulations to Aaron Wells and the marching Mustangs. I was a band parent myself, and it is an amazing, an amazing experience for, for all that are involved. It's been a, a month of sadness. I extend my sympathy to Mr. Durnall. One reason Mr. Yules is not here tonight is that he lost his mother last week. And recently, most people know, we lost former Superintendent Steve Kane, and I'm, all those losses are a lot to bear, and I'm, it's just a dark time. I look forward to basketball season getting going and into the holidays, and maybe we can lighten things. But that's all I have this evening.
Mr. Tucker?
Again, echo, congratulations to Mr. Wells and the marching Mustangs. It's, I had a lot of fun back in the day when I was, followed the band. It's, it was always enjoyable, those competitions. So congratulations to all their hard work. Condolences to, to Mr. Durnall and his family, and Mr. Kane and his family. Mr. Kane was the reason I came here, nineteen ninety-nine, and he was, he scared me, but he was a good, he was a good leader, and I learned a lot, I learned a lot from him. So I appreciate that, and hopefully he's in, he's in a better place. Thanks to Mr. Irwin for getting, getting this, all of our finances in order this evening and helping with the attraction and retention of our employees. Greatly appreciated. And one thing that we didn't mention was thanks for getting the, the ECAs back up, maybe a little bit more competitive than where they were in the past, because I know they had dropped off quite a bit as well. So, so thank you for all your hard work there and continue patience with, with COVID, and hopefully everybody stays healthy and we can continue to persevere. Thank you.
Mr. Durnall?
Thank you, Mr. Kerr. I want to thank you, I want to congratulate Mr. Irwin. I appreciate you, what you've done for us, and Matthew, you've, you've been special for us. Congratulate the band, and I want to just take a minute here, I don't want to talk too much, but I want to thank all of you for the texts and the letters and the cards that you sent me. I really appreciate that, so I'll, I'll let it go with that.
Thank you. We appreciate everyone coming tonight. There are many opinions on the, on vaccinations, on COVID protocols and things like that, and it is real difficult. Please know that we do read all the emails, we do listen, but at the end of the day, a decision has to be made and not everyone's going to be happy about that. But we are doing what we believe is, is in the best interest of our students. Even though it seems like there's been some dropping off of the, the height of the COVID that we just went through, it looks like it may be rebounding back. And when you look at the schools and the number of students and staff who've tested positive, that's a concerning number, which would make it that, you know, be a concern to slack off on our protocols at, at this point in, in time. We did a lot of good things tonight with paying our, our folks and trying to get their, pay their salaries up to a respectable purpose. Also, please know that we're not going to stop looking at them. You know, next, you know, we'll take a hard look at it again, and so see what we can, we can do, do there, because we, we appreciate our people. We appreciate our employees at every level. So I was glad that we discussed them all tonight because I thought that was very, very good to bring that all together. So appreciate that hard. We always appreciate the donations, keep those coming in, encourage the teachers to use donors' dues. I've seen that on the agenda numerous times, so, so it works. So we do that. And again, as the board would like to offer their condolences to Jimmy on the passing of Dorritta, and again, wonderful, wonderful person and lady. So with that, this meeting is adjourned, and have a good evening.